All right, we're gonna call the regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Grimes County to order at this time. It's Wednesday, June 13th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. We're located at 114 West Buckington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. At this time, we will have the invocation. Let us please stand. All right, I don't see a member of our chaplain committee or our county judges absent today. So let us bow our heads. Lord God, we come thanking you, Lord, this morning for all of the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, Lord Jesus, and we're so very grateful for the citizens of Grimes County, this United States, Lord Jesus. We pray now that you will continue to keep us all in your loving care. We pray now that you will bless the Commissioners Court of Grimes County to make the right decisions for our citizens, Lord Jesus. We also pray for our President of the United States. We pray for the world as a whole, Lord Jesus, and we want to be mindful to keep our first responders, our armed forces, in our prayers and pray your protection over them. And we just thank you for this day and for what you're going to do. We give you all the praise and all the glory, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the United States' flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we're up to our public comments. We do look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. You're welcome to share your thoughts or concerns in this public comment portion. We do ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes, so the floor is open if anyone had any public comments. If we have no public comments, at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items include the payroll, item number three; number four, the treasurer's list of claims and bills; number five, the minutes; and three, four, and five, agenda items. I do have some remarks to make about special meeting on May 16th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. I did already speak to our secretary regarding them, and it was to, the motion was to approve the classification of the 911 environmental position and not the pay, so we just want to strike where we said we were approving the pay. The other item that she had some concerns on is that we, on the May 30th, 2018, 10:00 a.m. meeting, we did want to add the treasurer to our budget hearings. Are there any other questions or concerns from the court? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five with the amendments recommended.
My second motion.
All right, we have a second, a first and a second, Commissioner Mallard and Commissioner Dobieinsky, all of those in favor of approving consent agenda items three, four, and five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're moving on right now to emergency management subdivision coordinator, Mr. David Lilly. The item is to consider and take necessary action to approve the replat of Gator Crossing subdivision that divides lot 3, 3.5693 acres, into two lots to be designated as Lot 3A, 1.96 acres, and Lot 3B, 1.608 acres. Mr. David Lilly? Is he not in here at this time?
He went to look for that plaque.
Oh, he went to look for that plaque, okay. Can we move forward with another agenda item and come back? We'll revisit this item. At this time, we'll move to item eight, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service, County Extension Agent Alan Holman. The item is present certificate of completion for David, Commissioner David Dobieinsky, for participating in the Commissioners Court Leadership Academy Class Number Seven. Is that correct? Class seven?
Yes.
Session three. Mr. Holman.
Thank y'all for allowing me to be here this morning.
Yes, sir.
To present this certificate of completion to Mr. Dobieinsky. This is the Commissioners Court Leadership Academy's Class Seven, Session Three, May 5th through 11th, 2018. Mr. Dobieinsky, you have the certificate for you right here. Also, off the record, we have one.
Not off the record.
For session two, from October 10th to the 12th, that we were given earlier this week too, so we'd like to present both of them.
Awesome. Did you get your picture?
No.
Okay. Awesome. Commissioner Dobieinsky, he's striving for excellence.
If I may give an explanation of the.
Sure.
Of the Leadership Academy. The purpose of it is to teach commissioners and judges across the state of Texas how to better communicate with our constituents, work with the legislators, and work with our people in Washington, D.C. We did spend a week in Washington, D.C. in this last conference where we visited with Congressman, some of the people who are making the decisions there. We got to go through the, a tour of the Capitol. We also visited Maryland and visited the county government there, which is much more different from ours here in the state of Texas. And it's been, it's been quite an experience. I've learned a whole lot about dealing with, not only with the legislature, but with our own employees. There's a lot of things in there. I would recommend that to anyone on the court to take that class.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Is Mr. Lilly not back yet? Item number nine, EMS Committee, Mr. Chris Kell. It is to present and discuss EMS Committee update. As Mr. Kell comes, I'd like to give an explanation on how this committee came into existence. Before my time, my predecessor, Mr. Julia Melcher, had a committee of emergency medical services committee when we were trying to acquire an additional ambulance for the county. Over the years, we received updates from St. Joseph's, and we realized, just like attorneys speak a different language and IT people speak a different language, we realized our emergency medical services people speak a different language that Commissioner Mallard and I, who were tasked with the strategic plan of reviewing the ambulance services in Grimes County, we didn't quite understand all of the information that we were receiving or whether we were receiving the correct information. So we decided to reactivate this committee and turn it over to the professionals to understand the reports we were being given and to make recommendations to the Commissioners Court. So with that being said, this was all part of the strategic plan that the citizens saw that they wanted an update periodically of where the emergency services were, what was happening with them, and possible future growth that the county was seeing. Was it time for a new ambulance? So we really appreciate all the people who have stepped forward to help us, and our chairman of that committee is Mr. Christopher Kell. We also have our Navasota Fire Department Chief Kokowski. We have Ms. Rhonda Ritchie of our first responders of Grimes County. We also have members of our Sheriff Department and our 911 addressing. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Chris, to give us an update.
So you're done? Thank you.
Did I take all your holes?
You told me I had two minutes.
Okay.
Court, thank you for having us. Just to give you an update of where we're at, when we took this over, kind of at the end of last year, Judge, one of Judge Levon's charges to Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Mallard was to be sure that we gathered as much information as we could to be able to provide good, sound information back to the court. And as a committee, we made a decision that everything that we did was gonna try and be solutions-driven. So if we found a problem, we were gonna try and find a solution to that problem. So just right off the bat, one of the first things we realized is we're still having long response times in the county. We requested and then received four years of run documentation from St. Joseph's, and we've been reviewing that, looking at response times, where the ambulances are, and we're still reviewing that information today. However, as part of that, we also, there was in the original agreement with the county, Medic 31, which is the Navasota-based ambulance, was able to be pulled from 911 service to do non-emergency and emergency transfers out of the hospital or out of the nursing homes, which left, you know, a gap in protection. So in working with, talking with St. Joe's, they have now committed to a fourth ambulance for Grimes County and no charge to Grimes County.
Awesome.
That was an effort that it took a little bit of discussion and commitment on the part of St. Joe's, but that ambulance should be in service. The projected date is August 1st. So there'll be additional coverage for the county. That ambulance will be based in Navasota with the understanding that it will be primarily dedicated to the transfers so that Medic 31 isn't taken off the street for 911 calls, but it will also be used to back our other ambulances up on 911 calls. One of the other things that has happened recently, Captain Rutledge with the Sheriff's Department, talking with Ms. Ritchie, we were concerned about the response times being able to get an AED to someone that's having a heart attack. What would be the fastest way to get that done? So we looked at the problem. We came up with an idea, let's go ahead and equip the Sheriff's Department's vehicles. The Sheriff's Department was on board. Captain Rutledge and his staff was very, very excited about it, and we delivered the first six AEDs thanks to donations from organizations and individuals within the county. We have some more funding coming in. It is my hope that in the next couple of months, we will not only have all the Sheriff's Department vehicles, but the constables' vehicles equipped and everybody trained to use those. Our deputies are usually the first ones on the scene to most incidents, so this will help get somebody that's trained and on scene and increase survival rates for our citizens. We're looking at a pile of information, and all of that information will be used to say, are we putting the ambulances in the right locations? Do we, you know, is BDI necessarily the best place, or do we need to look at moving those ambulances? And St. Joe's is willing to look at those. This may be things that, moving forward, the county may have to invest a little money in to better serve our citizens. However, we're also gonna try and make recommendations that are cost-effective for the county and the citizens. If y'all have any questions, be happy to answer them.
When you just spoke about BDI, we were talking about looking at the districts that our ambulance serves. So we're not only looking at, we're looking at all of them.
All of them, yes.
To see what's the best run time. Where would the best location be for this ambulance or that ambulance? So we're looking at the county as a whole because there's always been an issue that our county is so long that it takes additional time to come from BDI to Navasota if Navasota ambulance is out of the county. So we are very grateful that St. Joseph's has realized that the transfers from the nursing homes and from the prisons have increased and that it was committing a lot of our time for Medic 31 to be out of the county. So now with the addition of this transfer truck, is what I call it, a transfer truck, we have a truck that's dedicated and our ambulances get to stay here. But not only that, in peak times when you have the Renaissance festivals and all of these other things going on, we now have a backup ambulance that, that fourth ambulance is gonna make a tremendous difference, and we're just grateful that everybody's working together, the Sheriff Department, the first responders, the volunteer fire departments, everybody's coming to the table with solutions, and we're recognizing we do have a lot of challenges, but everybody's willing to work together to get some of this stuff solved for our citizens, and we appreciate. It's a lot of information. Some of the information came in with stacks, so it takes some time to go through, but we appreciate the effort that you all are putting forth to get it worked out for us.
One last thing, on the 21st, we'll be having a community input session here at the Anderson Community Center, City Hall, whatever it is over there, at 7:00 p.m. We would invite elected officials, members of the community, to come in and give us your feedback on what you'd like to see EMS look like in the county in the future. We need to plan for growth now. The county needs to be able to look at where they need to go, what the citizens want, what the citizens are willing to pay for, and what direction that needs to be. So we encourage everyone to come, and it'll be an open forum for folks to give us that information, and we'll take it back and see what we can do.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Ms. Lee, if we could possibly maybe get that on a website or an agenda item too, so that all the commissioners can be in attendance. Thank you so much for that update. I think I saw Mr. Lilly. We'll go back up to item number six, to consider and take necessary action to approve the replat. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Gator Crossing subdivision that divides lot 3 into two lots to be designated as Lot 3A and Lot 3B.
Yes. Commissioners, I'm still trying to put my hands on the original copy of the plaque. It was sent here, and someone did sign for it. It was during the week that I was gone to the emergency management conference, and it arrived. So, you know, what I'm suggesting is to at least consider whether or not to approve it, and if you do decide to go ahead and approve the plaque, then once we get, when I locate it, we'll bring, I'll bring it back and get everybody to sign it at that point.
Okay. Now, the smaller plats you had earlier.
That's basically the same, yeah. You still have it, sir? Like I said, it was delivered on the 14th of May, but who actually signed for it, we haven't enough to put our hands on that yet, but if need be, we can get another copy also.
Mr. Foltz, you see no problem with that, do you?
No, as long as you've seen it, you can approve it.
We did have a public hearing earlier, and we did put our eyes on the plaque, but just to make sure. So this is what you received in the mail?
Yes. Well, somebody received it. I'm trying to put my hands on it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, like I said, hopefully we don't have to have them redo that, but one way or the other, we'll provide an actual plaque for you to read. Proposed change.
Mr. Foltz, if we move forward with approving the replat, we'll task Mr. Lilly to make sure. Is that okay, or do we need to put our eyes?
No, ma'am. The thing you're deciding today is whether the plaque revision will interfere with the established rights of any owner of the part of subdivided land. If you have, if you can do that based upon seeing the copy, you can approve the proposed replat and sign the actual document later.
Okay.
And since the judge is not here anyway, we need to have your signature on it to close it out too. But like I said, once I locate it, I'll get to all of you.
All right, thank you. That's in your precinct, Mr. Dobieinsky?
It's not gonna interfere with any of the other property there because all of those, all of those lots have access to Highway 105 there.
And none of them been developed?
No.
I didn't really realize there was a subdivision there, but I'm glad.
It's just a long strip of lots there.
Right next to the rail line?
Yeah, between the rail line and the highway.
Okay. Well, are you making a motion, sir?
Yes, I move that we approve the replat of Gator Crossing subdivision that divides lot 3, 3.5693 acres into two lots to designate, to be designated as Lot 3A, 1.96 acres, and Lot 3B, 1.608 acres, and designate the county justice.
Well, we all signed it. We all, we all set the sign.
I set them. We have a motion by Commissioner Dobieinsky and a second by Commissioner Walker. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to item number seven, consider and take necessary action to approve the replat of King Oaks subdivision, Section 1, that combines lots 66, 1.75 acres, and lot 67, 1.25 acres, into a single lot to be designated as Lot 66-R, 3 acres. Mr. David Lilly?
Yes. Commissioners, again, as we discussed in the public hearing this morning, this is another of many of the replats that we've seen in King Oaks where property owners have bought adjacent lots and in preparation for eventually building, and now this particular property owner is ready to start building on their property. And so they're taking two lots, combining them into one, and there is no issues with access. The resulting lot will have direct access onto a county road, Belgrade Square, and I don't see any other issues with this lot as far as, there's no flood planes affected by it. There is one existing underground pipeline that crosses over the bottom left-hand corner of the lot, but it's, there's still plenty of room. The resulting acreage will be three acres if we build one.
If there's no further discussion, I move to approve the replat of King Oaks subdivision, Section 1, combining lots 66 and 67 into Lot 66R.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Mallard and a second by Commissioner Cox. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Lilly. We'll now move down to item number 10, District Clerk Diana Flewer, review and take action on District Clerk's request to change current part-time position to full-time. See attachment 10.
Thank you. Just to, don't have a whole lot to add, except that I did give y'all a copy of, I tried to clarify a little bit the numbers, and for the current year, what I've done is separated what's there and what I need, and from now till the end of the year, there'll be $18,005.88, and what I'm needing is $9,700. That's an approximate figure. And then also with that, I'll be giving money back at the end of my budget time. And then for the next year, '19 and this budget coming up, with my bottom line current budget, well, new budget, nothing would change as far as bottom line figure. If you were to give me my same budget I have this year for next year, there won't be an additional money needed.
So your digitalization of the records, that has already, you're pretty much at your end of?
Unless something pops up later, it seems like, I hate to say, I don't need it, but I think I've pretty much got everything done that needs to be done.
Okay. And you've been working for how many years, years on this?
Oh, gosh, I think probably three, three or four years, yeah. Two of which are mine.
Okay.
And I just want to add a little bit to the fact that since I have been short-staffed, we're having to tap into some overtime because my girls are having to pick up where they can't. I mean, we're having, you know, to take time with phone calls, not getting the days done, what needs to be done, so then we'll have to, have to do some overtime.
Well, we know that this year, with the onset of the county court at law now operating since October, we realize that your office has taken on additional, there's been an increase in your office for dockets. So you now assist five judges according to your letter.
That is correct.
And there are occasional, there are times occasionally that you have two dockets going on at the same time. You stated in your letter that the position will be responsible for preparing and sending out notices for all juries, for all courts, answer the phones, encounter assistance, make copies after court proceedings, take in the e-file we receive daily along with other general office duties. I know that with the mandate of you all going to e-filing, that's been a big challenge. And I did talk to, we did receive a letter from the district judge who requested that you also have a full-time person in this office.
That's correct.
And we thank him for his letter and clarifying for us that he saw a need in your office for a full-time person. We are reviewing this year's. We are in budget hearings, and we're reviewing the requests that have come in. We've, we've had requests for either new positions or positions that go from part-time to full-time of over approximately $400,000. So we're being very cautious in how we proceed with this year's budget, and we realize that many times we create positions, but we're also realizing we're having to go back and probably look at some of the positions we create in the future, you know, to make sure that our departments are running as effective and as efficient as they possibly can. What I said all of that to say this, they did move your position. You had a review in front of the salary grade committee, is that correct? And y'all chose to move, you're on that committee?
No, I'm not on that committee.
Anybody?
No, I'm on that committee.
Did they move it to a grade five?
Yes. It has to be done by the commissioner of court.
Okay. They make the recommendation?
Yes.
So the recommendation is being made?
No, I haven't come before them yet. They just started, and I think we've only had, we had the auditor's office, the, there were two others, the Rudden Bridge. We had a review last week, I think, but I think they're revamping that.
So that's why I was wondering. You didn't do, you weren't in the June 6th?
I know that Jessica Herrera is supposed to meet with Lucy Pope shortly after this meeting to kind of go over and get their notes all together and move forward from that.
So, no, to answer your question, it has not been before that team. I have not been before that.
Well, I knew that they were trying to get everybody's request reviewed June 6th, so you were not.
They, well, they, we went over time-wise, and I think they're revamping or revisiting the whole, the whole team, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay. No, I really don't, but I stayed in here for that whole thing. I came in and presented what I needed to present and left.
Okay. So you're requesting that it be moved to a grade five position, but it hasn't been. Okay. So you're requesting that it be moved to a grade five position, but it hasn't been reviewed and we haven't gotten a recommendation from that committee?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. All right, so any other thoughts?
I guess we probably should push it back until we actually get that recommendation. So we can, if we do approve it, we need to know what grade and, and everything before we actually approve, approve that, so.
Did you have?
Unfortunately.
Mr. Cox, please.
Yes, I'm just going to add a few comments. I mean, I'm, Ms. Flure has been up here as far as I can remember, I think, three times since I've been up here asking for some additional help. She's not asking to add an additional staff member, she's merely asking to add additional working hours for the current position that's already in place. And we've heard throughout the budget process of the anticipated growth of the county, and I don't dispute that, but one thing I'd like to point out is, and she does so in her letter, that she is now responsible for servicing five courts or five judges, which adds an additional burden on her office that wasn't there before. With regard to the growth, her growth is now. She's having to do more now than she did before. So I think we, it would be my recommendation that we seriously consider, you know, I'm not talking about next year's budget that's up for review and it's still in the planning stages, but the longer we kick this can down the road, the more she's going to have to pay in overtime money to her additional staff and the more burdensome it becomes on her office to file the necessary filings and do the work that's required to service the courts and the taxpayers in her office. So I'm certainly not opposed to, to listening at a grade classification later on down the road, but it, it's getting, I think Ms. Flure can testify that it's getting to the point of creating a bigger burden on her office than, than she can handle.
That's why I brought up the overtime situation because I just, I feel like it's gonna, I don't think I'm going to be tapping over the overtime money, one way or the other, it's gonna have to be.
Ms. Flure, what grade is the current position?
Well, all part-times are grade two or three, you know, when it's-
Two, I believe.
Yeah, that's any part-time position in the grade.
It's a grade two.
What are comparable, I guess, grades for other clerks?
My clerks are, are grade five.
All of your clerks are grade five, so this wouldn't be the same duties?
That is correct. What I would be able to do with my new full-time clerk would be to take, I've put the burden of CPS on my criminal clerk, who is trying to juggle to keep CPS going, which is, you know.
Where, where would the new clerk fall? Would they fall under CPS? Would they fall under kind of a multi?
The new clerk? Well, yeah, all those duties that I've already put in the letter and I will give that clerk to CPS court. It's a once-a-month court, but of course you have to prepare for it and you have to prepare after. You can ask Cory, she's in that court also, but.
Well, even as a new position, if all your other clerks are grade five, do we really have to go through the committee to, because it's just adding an additional clerk with that same, with the same duties?
That's correct.
So it really doesn't have to be reviewed by the solid structure committee?
And let me just add also, I've already told y'all this, but I'll say it again. In August, we have to go with our new case management program. And in August, we will be going to a training, to be trained for the new computer system. And if I have to hire a part-time person till the end of the year that's going to go to this training that y'all are going to pay five hundred and thirteen dollars for, and then they'll be gone because I'll get a full-time next year maybe. There's just a lot of things on the line for me right now as far as needing a full-time person now.
Well, according to the-
There's a question, I mean, a comment that you just made, maybe we'll get one next year. What if we don't get one next year? You going to hire a full-time person now until the end of the year?
No. I, how am I going to do that? Nobody would work for four months.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We don't know if we're going to be able to do that for the next year's budget season. So it, we're in a, we're in a bad situation to try to make a decision here in the middle of a, of a budget session. So how can we resolve this, either with, with part-time temporary people? Can we get some temporary people to come in to, to help you?
Ooh, my girls don't have time to change somebody on a temporary basis. I mean, all they could do is answer the phone and give the calls and nothing else.
Well, my thought is, or the agenda is requesting to change the current part-time position to a full-time. So current, so I, I have no problem with changing that position to full-time. Now, we do have a budget officer who's not here today, who has to propose a budget to the commissioner's court in the near future. I'd like to see the, the full-time position continue, but the request from us today is to change it from a part-time position to a full-time position. I have no problem with changing it today, but.
So if, if we change this to a full-time today, you would not staff that position for the remainder of the fiscal year?
I will try my best. I've been trying to staff it with a part-time and having trouble with that, but.
I mean, it-
I, I would like for us to keep in mind, excuse me, Mr. Cox, that this is a request from our district judge that we really seriously look at. If we're going to provide better, better services to, for our, our citizens, and we're being mandated by our state government to implement programs that many times don't come with funding and, but it creates a burden to the departments that have to implement the program. This is something, this position has been asked for, not just from her this year, but Ms. Wells and, and other, Ms. Wells has asked for this position in the past. She's asked for it last year and she is before you asking for it again. And I just believe that our, that she's saying that the difference, she will be returning money if we keep her budget for next year the same. She's going to re, be possibly returning money to the county, even with the addition of this full-time position because the records are now being, now have been taken care of. I just say that I, I would like to see us approve the position and, and hopefully we're moving forward with what we have to do for two thousand and nineteen. You know, we can't keep, I, I have a issue, it's on the agenda again. It's been before, it came through the judge's office to put back on the agenda again. I did speak with him about it. He was concerned that the district judge also was requesting this position. So I'd like to be respectful of our district judges and if they see a need, I don't think they would make the recommendation if they didn't see the need there, you know.
They wouldn't ask if I did.
We're, we're, we know that we have to prioritize what we do for two thousand and nineteen. Yes, we have a lot of requests, but we also have to look at, how is it affecting the citizens now? What's, what's, what do we need to take care of right, right away? You know, we have long-term, short-term, midterm. This is a short-term, I mean, this is a now situation from what I gather from everything that I've investigated.
Well, also, this is a commitment for future dollars before we're actually proposing a budget. So I don't know if there will be-
Well, it won't be, I'm kind of like her.
-overstepping any bounds by doing that as well?
It won't be the first time.
You can do a budget amendment for this year.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, by doing this also, you're committing future dollars, so.
Well, you're representing potentially to the person that gets hired in expectation, but you could always, with any office, every year, you could cut staff. You could say, we're not funding county attorney, we're not funding your staff anymore. Now, I could get mad and do something about it maybe, but you could always propose that. You, you guys are in charge of budget. You didn't ask this question, but what's the pay now and what's the floor of level five?
The pay now is fourteen and, or thirteen and it will be fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, so that's what, that's what you're asking them to consider if they bump it to full-time now, it's going to be a two-dollar. Regardless, it, it could go to the committee, but the floor for a five is fifteen.
Correct. What I was looking at, I, we were not looking at approving the grade. It doesn't speak to the grade, it's spelt to the position.
I understand. I, I thought if you're, if you're making it full-time and it's going to be, it can't be a two, I wouldn't think it would be a two. She's going to come back to you, I would think, two weeks from now, a week from now and say, hey, wait a second, that number needs to be fit with this person's actually doing. You could handle that now if you're bumping it to a full-time and with that comes along that increase in pay. Certainly, I would think you'd want to discuss that or at least know that.
Well, that's why I was asking her, what was the grade? Because if the grade was still in line, and I don't know what that, I don't have the grade in front of me to know what that top figure is for that grade, but if there is a-
For grade two, top figure is fourteen. For grade five, top figure is eighteen.
But the floor, the floor of five is what?
Is fifteen.
It's fifteen, so you're topping a dollar difference pretty much from what's committed.
And there's, as far as the budget, there's, I mean, there's still going to be money left. I'm going to have around eight thousand dollars left at the end of this year, even doing that, even bumping it to fifteen dollars an hour today.
I'm comfortable with moving the position from a part-time to a full-time position, but I'm also concerned, just as Commissioner Mallett is, about committing dollars for the next fiscal year. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be a wise expenditure, but without our financial, chief financial officer here and the direction that, that that may be going, I would like to get, get his input on those dollars.
Well, as the county attorney mentioned, though, we're, I guess, not necessarily committing future dollars because it could be cut in the next budget.
Correct.
Usually wouldn't want to do that, but, you know.
Well, and I might also add that you could certainly turn to Ms. Flure and say, if you expect this in the next budget year, besides the fact that you're not going to need to digitize anymore, it's not as though you're necessarily giving those dollars back. That was given for a project that's now over. Maybe you could tighten your belt somewhere else. I mean, that, that would be fair for you all to do. I'm not-
And I think we're going to ask all of our-
There's going to be lots of belt tightening around.
We're going to ask all of our departments to do that. That's why I, I, maybe I should have said it the way you said it, but I was saying, at some point, when you have those type of requests over four hundred thousand dollars, we're going to have to go back to say, hey, you're going to have to either do better with the funds you receive in working, like I said, e, efficient as possible with what you have, because this is all we can do.
And I, and I bet you'd be willing to say, I will try my best to give up some pencils in exchange for somebody to fix it up.
Just pencils. I, I'm just going to make the motion to go ahead and move the current part-time position to a full-time position.
Second.
Well, we have a motion as second on the floor to take action on the district clerk's request to change the current part-time position to a full-time position. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Commissioner, can I ask for the, the auditor? Are you asking that the district clerk come back and make the request to change the amount?
Yes.
When you're just moving this from part-time to full-time, keeping the pay the same?
I think that if she has-
Or at the same rate, I should say.
Okay, if she has the ability to go ahead and start advertising for a full-time position, then go ahead and then maybe next week, if you, if it's not too late to be on next week's agenda and you get the recommendation from the committee, can we do that, revisit that item?
I don't think next week, I don't know if they'll have it, um, when their meeting is for, I don't know.
Well, you can bring it back if you so decide.
Might be a couple of weeks, okay.
Next week or whatever. Is that okay?
Yeah, yes. I, I just wanted clarity about whether you were authorizing the floor or five at this moment. I don't hear you authorizing that.
So the pay would remain at the budgeting, is that what you're paying me?
I forget if it's thirteen or twelve, it's within one of those.
She has in her budget though, some will be removed.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
We're now up to Roden Bridge and I don't see Mr. Walker here, but is there a representative?
He's not necessarily here.
Okay.
He's at a Friday, that's his thing, that tomorrow.
Mr. Lilly's going to represent in his stead, yes, sir.
We also have representatives from the, uh-
Let me, let me read that agenda item, sir, I'm sorry. Consider and take possible action on electrical installation permit requested by San Bernard Electric Co-op for Wyrick Road. See attachment eleven.
This is to install a power pole and guide wire, or guide wire to allow them to run power out to a home via building wiring. It's going to be crossing over the county road.
There's adequate clearance where crosses, crosses the road.
Yeah, this is, I don't, there's nobody here for this one. I've got a copy of a, the actual map here, written this round.
I see distances, I don't see height, height above the roadway.
It is crossing over the road, it's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anything here. It just says, install overhead electric in accordance with Texas Ministry of Power Title forty-three.
And this is for a power pole and an anchor guide wire?
It's actually going underground, I believe, Mr.-
Part of it is, yeah. I think the part that's crossing the road is actually underground.
Okay, so the power line is probably just to add a power line distance to here and then it actually goes underground?
Is the guide wire across the road or in the road?
As long as it's proper depth, if it is underway, but there's no cross-section of that also.
They've got that good, you're forty-two inches there.
Oh, okay.
What, Commissioner Mallett, is that, who said that? Is that you, Commissioner Mallett?
Lyric Road? I don't recognize the name.
It's increasing too.
Two, I'm sorry.
Okay. It, it says it's going underneath the road and they have the forty-two inch depth on it there, it's going underneath the road, so that's, that's fine.
Is that a motion to approve, sir?
Uh, yes. I'll sit.
All right, we have-
I move that we approved the installation of a permit by San Bernard Electrical Co-op for Wyrick Road. And-
All right. We have a motion to approve the item number eleven. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Living. We're now at number twelve, consideration and possible action regarding approval of a pipeline installation permit for Magellan Pipeline Company. Mr. Dob, Commissioner Dobinsky, you did want to speak to that matter?
Yes. Do we have any representatives here, Tom? We, we met with you all's contractor, a couple- We, we met with you all's contractor a couple of weeks ago. And we were informed last Friday that that contractor was no longer your contractor. So we can't approve these uh, until we have a meeting with the contractor before we approve them with Mr. Walker and I. Uh, so I'm gonna move that we, uh, table these until a later date.
Second.
What contractor?
MTI, we met with MTI.
We don't know who MTI is, but the contractor.
This, this is for uh, the Magellan Pipeline that's coming through and hitting the power line in, 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 off of three eleven, is that correct?
We'll call it Center Point.
Center Point, yes.
We'll call it Center Point with the pipeline.
Yes.
But MTI, I'm not sure who they are, we have not contacted with them.
We met with him representing you all about two weeks ago.
Excuse me, Mr. Dobieinsky, um, this is, we're going to... Yes, ma'am. We're proposing, you're proposing that you table the item today until there's some clarity, because there is a new contractor.
Yes.
Okay, it sounds like they're not familiar with the contractor, so if you're tabling the item, Mr., he'll be around if you have further questions of him, so...
We can, we can discuss this after.
Okay, if you all don't mind, and he'll be more than glad to answer your questions after the meeting. So, do we need to make a motion to table or just table?
It's up to you.
Okay.
I move that we table the motion until, uh, we get this resolved.
Second.
All right. All of those in favor are tabling the i- item until the new contractor issue is resolved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We're up to, you gonna do Roden Bridge report?
Um, I didn't say anything about that.
Okay, he, he can, he'll do it, of course, thank you.
Mr. Walker's at a, at a conference, I said, today and tomorrow. Uh, continuing routine maintenance on roads throughout the county, placing base on County Road three forty-four in preparation for chipped and sealed. And I was out there, um, two days ago looking at that. Uh, we're also, uh, spot overlay with asphalt on one seventy-five, replaced culverts on one seventy-five and old schoolhouse road, repairing base, failure on County Road one sixty-one. Continuing restoring of Center Point Energy's uh, destruction on our roads and across Texas from the previous power line construction. Use the asphalt zipper to begin repairs on Micrea Road and pre-contractor had been removing trees along County Road two seventeen, three twenty-three, three twenty-four and Micrea. Patch and spread wrap material on parking lot and roads at the Grimes County Expo Center in preparation for the fire last week. Uh, drainage crew has been performing channel ditch and ditch work on County Road one forty-one, sixty-one loads, uh, five thousand forty-seven linear feet. County Road one forty-four, eighty-one loads, two thousand seven hundred sixty-five linear feet. Micrea Road, nineteen loads, one thousand nine linear feet. Also working on County Road three oh-two ditches and preparing for replacement of two culverts across three oh-two. Side ditch cleared ditches on County Road one seventy-nine, thirty-one hundred sixty-five linear feet. County Road two thirty-eight, four thousand one hundred ninety-one linear feet. County Road one fifty-one, thirty-seven, seventy-six linear feet. And County Road two thirty-five, thirty thousand two hundred sixty-eight linear feet. And County Road two twenty-nine, twenty-eight thousand five hundred and nine linear feet. Total ditching for the year, fiscal year two thousand eighteen is approximately two hundred six point three five miles of ditches created or improved. Uh, he did inform me that we'll probably start paving Micrea towards the end of next week, if not the end of next week, for sure, the following week, and then follow that with County Road three forty-four.
Thank you for that update, Commissioner...
Yes.
Dobieinsky. We are now moved to item number thirteen, uh, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signature. Uh, Mr. David Lilly?
Uh, we're recommending against it, uh, and the main reason is we are anticipating more rain this week. And I checked the weather recording this morning, we're supposed to be some rain today and it's gonna continue throughout the week. So, I think it's safe to say, and, and in talking with, we do have one fire chief here, Chief Norwood, he, he agrees with that, he promised that we probably would be best to let people continue their work.
Okay. We certainly thank you all. Um, we'll take no action on item number thirteen. Number fourteen, we have any updates, um, other than the EMS that was presented earlier? Are there any other strategic plan updates? If not...
Miss Walker, um, can I ask, do we know when E-GAL is supposed to come back?
I just received, uh, some, an email with kind of a few suggestions. Uh, I, I, well, I've got it this morning, I guess I got it last night, so I haven't had a chance to review it and I was gonna present it to everyone, and a couple of options they've got right now.
Judge McCage and Judge Kramer have requested that they be contacted and involved in all of everything that's going on with it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Item number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve the pay for combined DH position nine one one GSI Environmental Coordinator. See attachment fifteen, it is suspected that the court will conduct a closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matter. I am going to request that at this time, Ms. uh, Mrs. Lee is at a conference. Judge, um, Fouth is also at a conference. So I was asked that we table the item until they could both be present for this personnel matter. With that being said, and we'll just move on to item number sixteen. Our county attorney, Mr. John C. Holtz, consider and take action regarding cause number three two six seven two Grimes County, Texas versus Charles W. Cook in the twelfth Judicial District Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five five point zero seven one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney.
And Commissioners, before you go into closed session, if I might, um, make a request. I know that there are some individuals here that have, um, uh, ownership interest in properties that may be affected. I know at least, uh, one individual has, uh, requested from me the opportunity to speak to you all. Um, if you'd be willing to entertain those folks, I would think that anybody that would want to make a comment might be allowed to make that comment at this point. As you all know, if we go into closed session, uh, a party that is an adversary is not permitted in the closed session. But if you deemed one of these folks appropriate to the discussion for litigation purposes who wasn't an adversary, it might be that, uh, you could request that they be in the closed session. I would prefer that we get on the table right now, uh, who has what information to provide. And I know there's several folks here that might wanna speak.
Okay. Do we have anyone that has, um, any concerns or would like to make any comments at this time concerning the agenda item? Yes, sir, could you come to the podium and state your name?
Um, uh, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
My name is Ron Nissimov. I own a lot that my wife and I purchased in two thousand and eleven in Mr. Cook's subdivision that he planted as a private gated community, Chair Buena North.
Excuse me, I didn't get the last name, I'm sorry.
Nissimov, can I show you this? Go ahead, I'm sorry, you can finish the name issue, but if you wanna tell the Commissioners where your place is, might show them.
Uh, it's, do you want me to spell it here?
Yes.
It's N like Nancy, I S like Sam, S like Sam, I M like Mary, O V like Victor. Can I bring it to the chair?
You bet, you bet.
Okay, so in, in two thousand and eleven, my wife and I bought this lot here and this is a planted, approved plot for a private gated community that Mr. Cook sold us. We hoped to enjoy our weekends and vacations in a nice, uh, Grimes County property. Instead, Mr. Cook has turned it into a nightmare for the last six years. And I'm, I'm concerned that the request he's making to you is to avoid paying us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in attorney's fees that we were awarded by Judge Kramer in the State District Court and possibly a hundred seventy-five thousand if he continues his appeals. Um, there are victims of his actions that are not named in your county's lawsuit. Uh, you, you have sued Mr. Cook for illegally selling land here. But in addition to illegally selling land there, he illegally told these people that they could use our private road and our private gate to get there, even though they have other public means of public access. Um, somehow, Mr. Cook, through his mis, mis, misinterpretations of his lawyer and his threats of lawsuits, convinced our HOA that was supposed to protect our rights to align themselves with Mr. Cook. And they told us they control the gate, they will not, they will agree with Mr. Cook to let the trespassers on our property. And if we wanted to do anything to stop it, they would, uh, charge us criminally, and our only remedy was to, to file a lawsuit. Uh, they thought that we were not stupid enough to, uh, spend a fortune over seven hundred fi- uh, feet of dirt road. But the issue for us is, we couldn't believe in America that a developer could collude with an HOA to steal the property rights that were clearly ours, because they thought nobody would spend the money to, to fight it. But we did fight it. Uh, we have built a shell house there five years ago that's just sitting there empty, because we don't have money to fix it. I spent half of my pension trying to fight Mr. Cook. My, uh, we have spent so much money on credit cards and, and, and how, when are we gonna get this money back? And now, under Texas Home Stat law, he can exempt two hundred acres from us getting our money back uh, once the appeals are exhausted. So we're just concerned that that's what he's trying to do here by selling all his land. I don't know what the urgency is to sell this land in section two. Um, so... After years of litigation, last year Judge Kramer awarded, agreed with us on almost every claim that we made. Mr. Cook had no legal basis for what he did. He made the most absurd claims, trying, trying to get the HOA to agree with him, and he was successful at it. Um, the judge awarded us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars so far in legal fees. If Mr. Cook continues with his appeals, it could be a hundred seventy-five thousand that we have to pay out of our own pocket. Cause the HOA has insurance, legal insurance that it denied to us and used it against us on behalf of Mr. Cook. Now, if you don't wanna take action to maybe help us, I know that we have different matters from your lawsuit. But at, at the same time, I think there is a po- public policy issue that you, you don't have to drop your lawsuit against Mr. Cook. And if there's collateral damage to us, I think you should consider that whether what he is trying to do is to avoid paying us the, the attorney's fees that he's gonna owe us. But if you don't wanna do it on our behalf, there's other reasons that you should take your actions. First of all, he's apparently told you that he plans to not subdivide any of that property. Um, that, and that's why he, he wants you to go ahead and let him, uh, drop the lawsuit and to, to sell it. Well, just a couple of weeks ago, he filed an appeal in our case, in the fourteenth court of appeals in Houston, in which repeatedly claims that he has the right to subdivide that subdivision into eleven acre tracts. Now, why is he send, filing this two, two weeks ago when he's telling you he has no plans to subdivide it? I don't know. Um, he has not ev- he's not been truthful with you guys with the Grimes County for years, and there's a history of that. In addition to that, if you drop the lawsuit, you are in fact allowing him to subdivide and, and build access roads in a, in a violation of state and county law. This is what the, the tracks look like right now. This is not what they looked like before he started doing all these actions. So even if he tells you he's not gonna subdivide, he's already subdivided. And you're gonna allow him to go ahead and sell all these properties invite, without submitting a plan to subdivide them. Sorry, I'm just trying to encapsulate, uh, six years of suffering into two minutes here. He cannot be trusted. He wrote this handwritten note in May of twenty, uh, twenty twelve that he was going to properly plant section two and, and sign it in, to the county of, of county officials, and he still didn't do it, and he sold four lots illegally after that. Before you file your lawsuit, two days before you file your lawsuit against him, your county dis- uh, prosecutor said that they, his preliminary investigation that he believes that Mr. Cook committed criminal acts and he was gonna, uh, charge him criminally. And he says here that, um, they had the conversations with Mr. Cook related to similar matters in the past. On those occasions, we allowed Mr. Cook to forego prosecution by remedying the problems. I quite frankly, I'm tired of having to rehash these issues with Mr. Cook. I'm beginning to believe that criminal prosecution may be the only way to ensure his voluntary compliance with the law without excessive legal intervention. Please don't let him off the hook again until you find out what, what he's really trying to do, who he's selling to, whether he actually plans to subdivide or not. And if he's doing this to avoid paying us all the legal fees that he's forced us to incur. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And just, just if I can just clarify, uh, and you can sit down, Mr. Nissimov. He and a couple of other folks filed suit on the claim that they were led to believe they were buying property that wasn't going to be burdened with an easement to be used by folks north of their portion or their section of the subdivision. That's been their complaint. I, I would just point out to you that some of the folks that are north are the owner or were the owners of the tract that's in question for us. And one of the owners that remains is the Watson family. I understand they be, may be here, is that correct? Yeah, and so when you raised the issue about the Watsons at the last time we considered this, they are here. I don't know if they wanna speak, I don't know what their position is. Certainly you obviously want more information rather than less information when you're trying to make a decision about whether to non-suit or dismiss this lawsuit. But I have continued to raise the issue for you all, uh, or ask the question, what is the urgency at this moment? If, if two forty-nine is not, has not been constructed yet, I can't imagine that Mr. Cook is going to sell his lots or his, his property to anyone else before two forty, two forty-nine's constructed. Some buyer would wanna know where it's going to lie and what it's going to look like. So I'm not reali- I still remain uncertain what the urgency is. I can tell you that I looked online after Mr. Nissimov contacted me and found that the brief from Mr. Cook's side was in fact filed last week. So that lawsuit is currently pending in the Court of Appeals. That may very well be the urgency that got this thing before this court, I don't know that.
And the Watsons are here, could you at least point out where your property is on, on the map that's here for us?
I don't think it's actually divided up in that map.
May we have your name, please? Do you have your map?
My name is Justin Watson.
I, I can show that one.
Yeah, show them, worry that.
I mean, I have my, my plot plan, just right there. So here's, here way over up. This is, so this is our property here, this one, right here. You go up here, like right here.
It is in the zone that's blackened out, okay. Did you have any comments that you would like to make before?
I, I don't know what y'all wanted, y'all called and asked for more information and I brought my deed and I brought my, my plan that I got when I got it, but I don't know what y'all want from us. We just want access to the, to our house without being bullied and terrified and to saying we're not allowed to drive where we're driving, so.
All right, if I could ask the question, if you all don't mind. I assume, Ms. Watson, you know there's an issue about whether the access from the south is available to you all. That's the lawsuit, it sounds like to me.
Right.
Right, and then we're not involved in that, I'm just trying to get clarity, to be honest with you.
So, when we bought the property, we were told we were allowed to come through the south gate up. Well, this, cause our mailbox was down here on, um, on this road. So we thought we, you know, that, for the post office, I was for our mailbox, so we just sort of left them down. Then, um, as of the first year, we've not driven up that road. We've moved our mailbox to the west off Slot Road, and we just drove through the west gate to our property.
Is it closer or that, what was your reason for moving the mailbox?
Because they told us we weren't allowed to, the, through the other, other lawsuit we have with them. They, they won their part of it and they're appealing it, and they said, you're not allowed to drive up this road anymore through, um...
And now you come in from here?
Come in through, yeah.
Okay, and do you also have the access through here on that block?
No, no, because the road that off Paul Blackland has been washed away through all the rains in the last few years. We used to, when we originally bought the property, we had access.
You now travel into the property off of what road?
Slot Road, right here.
Which is out of, uh, Millstone, Millstone subdivision there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just wanna respond quickly to that. The only person who told them they had access was Mr. Cook. We specifically told them and their real estate agent that we did not think they had access. They still decided to buy their property disregarding what we told them about our legal rights.
And that's, and that's why I don't think we wanna get into.
Instead of suing Mr. Cook, they're suing us.
I, I understand, and I don't wanna get in between those, that they can just have their own, doesn't necessarily involve a county interest. And so whether you think one side's right or wrong, it doesn't really make any difference. The question, though, I guess is, have, are you aware what the impact of two forty-nine is going to be to your access?
I'm not sure how, I mean, we, since we bought it, we've been told that the, it would come through the property north of us or the, just north of us, and that we would have access to two forty-nine through a feeder road or some sort of access road. Kind of what we were told.
Right, there's not gonna be any feeders, and it looks like your property is gonna be a couple hundred feet from the right of way.
Right.
So unless some, it would appear that unless Mr. Cook gives you a hundred feet or so access to get on to two forty-nine, you may or may not be able to use that. It, it would appear, though, that you might still have that slot road access from the south, is that your understanding?
That would be my understanding, that I would always have slot road access through it.
Cause I don't think two forty-nine's gonna impair, impact that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And I believe there's also a creek crossing.
Well, that's the part that's been washed out.
Well, two-two forty-nine, though, I think. There's one right there on that private road.
That's what she's saying, been washed out and why they hadn't been able to use it. But can I ask another question, though, please? Where we are is Mr. Cook has asked the county to dismiss a lawsuit that the county brought against Mr. Cook for subdividing his land into the part that was sold to Mr. Lingal and two other tracts, Roden, and then there are two other people that have now since conveyed back to Mr. Cook. Are you aware of that?
I, I knew there was some lawsuit going, but not, I mean.
And the lawsuit was complaining that Mr. Cook failed to file a plat wherein, in the plat he would have to show or in the platting process, he would have to bring the roads to county specification. And that was one of the primary complaints. If he's now requesting that that lawsuit be dismissed, do you have an opinion about that?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you're not comfortable, and I don't wanna get.
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, as long as we can have access to our house, that's all we want. We just wanna live quietly and peacefully and just go to our house.
But if the, if the roads aren't kept up to standard by Mr. Cook, then, you know, you might have difficulty getting to your home.
Exactly.
And I don't wanna get you in a fight with Mr. Cook, huh? Not my intention.
Right, 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 no, I understand.
Is the road that they travel in the subdivision that's maintained, is it maintained by Mr. Cook? Or is that, I heard you say, I've heard Millstone, which is?
So, so these are county roads here, this Millstone, and then it goes to Slot Road, and I believe Slot Road is a county road.
Part of it, yes, part of it.
Part of it is and part of it is not. And then, we've not had any issue, Mr. Cook has, twice since we lived there, maintained the road. He's helped fix it and maintained it all the way to our property. We've had a couple of washaways with the rains we've had in the last couple of years, and fixed it and made sure that we were safe. Called, is it coming here, he has called to make sure that we have access to the road. So, I mean, so if he, so if it's, it's dropped, and so he's in charge of keeping it up, of the upkeep of the road? Is that, we don't know, sorry.
No, you're fine.
In there, in there, yes.
He's in charge of the upkeep.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
This is there, the road they use comes out of here. So these are the two tracks that he sold off that have now been converted back to him. This is the one that they got, and their access goes down here, and there it is. So the road up here, to get out this road, been washed out, right creek there, so they're going down here, and two forty-nine's coming through up there. So that road that you just asked the question about, where here, and then Mr. Cook is the one that's maintaining it. That would be the issue, if you dump the caves, then that road would remain probably the same status.
Are we ready to move forward, we're going into closed session?
All right, unless there's anyone else that wants to speak in open session, and it's up to you, you don't have to make it an open request. I just knew Mr. Missimov contacted me, and I knew he wanted to address the point.
Okay, well, I'll read the item again. Consider and take action regarding cause number thirty-two-six-seven-two Grimes County, Texas versus Charles W. Cook in the twelfth Judicial District Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is expected that the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the attorney. And at this time, I'm gonna ask that we do go into a closed session. And the time is ten sixteen. All right, item number sixteen was to consider and take action regarding cause number thirty-two-six-seven-two Grimes County, Texas versus Charles W. Cook in the twelfth Judicial Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is expected that the court will convene in closed session or executive session regarding this item as authorized by section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney. So we are back into open session, and the time is, what is your time, do you have?
Ten fifty-two.
Okay, ten fifty-two. Okay, I read to you all the agenda item we were considering. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Uh, I move that we take no action and continue as we've been going on with this suit.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we take no action regarding cause number thirty-two-six-seven-two. All of those in favor of taking no actions? May I get a vote?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have, the motion has been passed that we take no action regarding cause number thirty-two-six-seven-two Grimes County, Texas versus Mr. Charles Cook. So.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Up to item number seventeen. It has been moved and seconded by Commissioner Dobie, Mallard, and seconded by Commissioner Dobieinsky. That was adjourned, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.